Let's call the meeting, Gordon, and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honorable Mayor Ron Shaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Present.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our February 20 regular meeting. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of those minutes were included in your packet, and they are presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody had a chance to read and review? Are there any questions, corrections? If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to approve the minutes from the February 20 regular city council meeting.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation, possible action on acceptance of our 2019 budget calendar. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Your Honor, for your consideration tonight as city council. And as required by the rules of procedure adopted by city council, I'm presenting the proposed budget calendar for the 2019 budget. So those dates, as you see there, can change based upon what council would like to see. We made a few modifications last year when we were looking at putting the strictly-for-streets item on the ballot, and we wanted to wait till after the outcome of the election to determine whether or not we were going to pass that budget the way that it was presented. We've taken off that extra time, so it looks like the second reading of the ordinance and public hearing to adopt the 2019 budget and set the mill levy will be November 6. Other than that, we'll go through our regular standard presentations by each department and give council the opportunity to look at each budget, line item by line item, and know what's in the budget. So if you would like something different, or something new, or like to change that, we can discuss that now.
That's good.
Anybody have any comments to the calendar or wish corrections? I think it's, from my perspective, is functional and meets our needs. Very good.
That's what we'll work off of. Thank you.
There's no questions or changes, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the 2019 budget calendar.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation on bids for one police patrol vehicle. Commander Crone.
Heated Mayor and Council, what I've got here is requests to purchase a police patrol vehicle. This is part of our regular yearly capital improvement plan. We try and replace vehicles as needed. Right now, we have one patrol vehicle needs replaced. It's only got 84,000 miles, but it's had some major paint issues. We've got a... One of our normal vendors that we use to repaint vehicles stated that the cost to paint the vehicle would be more than what the vehicle's actually worth, which is not uncommon for police vehicles just because it's got, you know, 84,000 city miles on it. Based on that, that kind of came into play to get rid of this one. And in case somebody had some questions, there are two other vehicles we're going to get this year, but they're not patrol vehicles, so that's why it's kind of separated from really what the overall request is going to be. But for tonight, it's just for a patrol vehicle. Funding source, again, this is a capital expense. There's, within the budget, $38,500 to purchase a vehicle, to include equipping the vehicle, which will be a separate bid as well, that'll happen here in the next month or so. The advertisement for bid followed the city procurement policy, and I received three different bids. Unfortunately, two of the bids didn't meet basic specifications or requirements such as how the bids are dropped off and exactly what we're looking for for minimum specifications for the types of vehicles. Based on that, staff recommends that council accept a bid from Larry H. Miller in Lakewood, Colorado, to purchase one Ford Police Intercept... Intercepter Utility Vehicle for a total of $28,450, again, which is within budget. Are there any questions?
Does that leave you... You said there we'll see another resolution to retrofit?
Correct.
And does that leave you enough padding there with... Because it's $38,500 for everything, correct?
That's... That's correct, yeah. Typically, the cost to outfit one vehicle runs between $9,000 and $10,000. That's purchasing equipment and upfitting as well, so there's two different aspects of that. Usually, the company that upfits a vehicle, that's who we buy the equipment through as well.
So our resolution tonight just needs to include the $28,450?
Just for the purchase of the vehicle, correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? If none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution accepting the bid from Larry H. Miller from Lakewood, Colorado, for the 2017 Ford Intercepter Utility for $28,450.
May I second it? I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Doug Shasso. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation on bids for fiber optic materials. Mr. Nation?
A little more expensive.
Brent's always needing money.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to buy a bunch of bolts.
That's a lot of bolts.
Yeah, it's a lot of bolts. This is... And first of all, I want to thank Doug Hoffman. This is... This comes directly from Doug. When we have one of these big projects, we go ahead and just let him run it through inventory control, and I told him I'd go ahead and come in and ask for the approval, since I'm here already. So I do appreciate the work that he does and puts together on these projects for us. And right now, I know Doug is a very busy man, just like the rest of us, trying to get all geared up for some of these things. So this is probably the first of, it's looking like, probably three material bids that we will be bringing to council. This is literally just a bunch of wire and bolts that we need to get started on a lot of the aerial portions of this, and then some of the handholds and some of the other things that we need. So next one, I think we bring back is probably the fiber optics cable itself, but this is what we need to get started. So anyhow, we went out to bid. We were looking for unit prices on a lot of this. So this is based upon probably about a 90% design of the system, but we wanted to be able to go ahead and get materials so our contractor could begin work on the 2nd of April. And so this will get us started. We are asking for a little bit of cushion with this bid, so if we do have some additional requests, our selected companies can hold their unit prices for us, and we can pick up some additional material as we move forward. So that's why it doesn't totally match what you see on the bid tabulation sheet. So we had one item that kind of jumped out that we wanted to go with a separate company. The majority of these items that we want to approve tonight are from Graybar, but we also did want to okay the handholds from... It was a Wesco, yes. So I'm here tonight looking for authorization and unit prices for materials from Graybar in an amount not to exceed $240,000, and then unit prices from Wesco in an amount not to exceed $8,500. Any questions?
Mr. Hoffman has to figure out how... Where to put all this in.
Yes. This is the small stuff, so this is easy to find where that place is for. It'll be the next shipment that will take up a lot of room.
Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution. Approval or denial?
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution for approval for the unit bid prices for fiber optic materials from Graybar in an amount not to exceed $240,000, and from Wesco in an amount not to exceed $8,500.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thanks. And tell Doug we appreciate. I know how much he saves by going through and individually doing all of this, so.
Okay, I'll pass that along.
Thank you. Next is a presentation on bids for a golf course triplex mower. Mr. Gibbons.
Or Matt Works. You're going to give me a complex there with Mr.?
Matt.
Thank you. I'm here for the triplex mower, which is a greens mower or a three-reel type of mower that you may see on a golf course. It's in the 2018 approved capital. $40,000 was budgeted in that line item for that. We went out for bids, made them available at City Hall. Three companies actually did bid. Two were Toro mowers. One was a John Deere mower. Currently, we have six mowers. Hopefully, you saw it in the supporting documents. Hopefully, you all got that. All of which are Toro, the same exact model that was bid. So we are asking for the approval from L.L. Johnson for $30,895. And I know there will definitely be questions.
Anybody have any questions for Matt Gibbons?
The obvious question, which is, why did Tiles &amp; Style just bid something completely different than what we asked for?
You know, they actually bid the same model that we asked for in our specifications. However, they bid a different type of reel. They added a groomer attachment, which is something that in... They're in Illinois, and in southern Illinois, they use different type of grass. They use groomers to help stand up the grass and get a finer cut. They also put a canopy on it. They put a bunch of extra stuff on it, and when I opened it, I was like, who... I'd never heard of the company before, to be honest with you. I did get a call from the local Toro distributor, and I let him know that another Toro distributor had bid on our... And they weren't too happy because, you know, territories, et cetera. But obviously, they're nowhere near the other two companies, so.
I appreciated the information that showed why you were going with what you put in there. Thank you for that.
Any other questions? If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid in the amount of $30,895 from L.L. Johnson.
Second.
A resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll. Call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt.
And, Your Honor, if I could interject briefly, on the patrol vehicle, the motion that was made, all of the supporting documents shows a 2018. There's a typo in the memo to show 2017 Ford Intercepter. I just wanted to make sure it was clear on the record that they're getting a 2018 vehicle, not a year-old version. I don't know...
Overunit?
Exactly. I just wanted to make sure that was clear on the record. That was the intent, was to go with a 2018, not a 2017. And if we need to redo the motion, if anybody has any issues with that, otherwise, make sure that it's correct in the minutes, and we should be fine.
John, we're good with that, aren't we? Just to make the clerical adjustment from 2017.
Yeah.
It's done.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Done, gentlemen.
Thanks, Jason. Next is a presentation on accepting a petition for annexation of the Fort Morgan Farms five property and schedule the first reading of the annexation ordinance and a zoning ordinance for March 20. Mr. Glamire?
Thank you. Good evening. What you have in your packet tonight is a petition for annexation of property into the city of Fort Morgan. Jason's worked hard on the petition and all the ancillary paperwork that goes with that. This property, we didn't include a map with this one, but it's located on the corner, northwest corner of Q and Nelson. This is a 40-acre parcel that Mr. Rob Graves has purchased and agreed to annex into the city. We think he intends to hold this property for future development, most likely some type of residential development, similar to what he's doing on the other side of Nelson. But we don't see any issue with this one, so we would offer this petition for your approval tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Glamire?
Mr. Northrup.
Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting a petition for annexation of the Fort Morgan Farms five property and scheduling first reading of the annexation ordinance and a zoning ordinance for March 20.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation on accepting a petition for annexation of the Bath property and scheduling a first reading of annexation ordinance and a zoning ordinance for March 20 also. Mr. Glamire?
Okay, a second petition for you to consider tonight. These parcels, there's actually three large parcels included in this petition. One of them is owned by Mr. Keith Bath. The other two are owned by Mr. Rob Graves. These parcels, we did include a map. They're located north of the industrial park, east of the Walmart and the college, REA. They're rather large, so they take up a large area. South of the interstate, on the east side, they're bordered by Kula property that you're familiar with. So these are rather large parcels. All three, or the two property owners are interested in annexing into the city and for future development, and so we'd offer this petition for you tonight as well. Happy to answer any questions. Again, Jason's done all the work on this. We worked hard to come up with the legal descriptions and such, so.
And if I could add, this will likely be multiple annexations to make sure that we maintain connotity.
Yeah.
By the time it's all done, all of the property would be annexed. So rather than making the property owners have five or six petitions, we just locate it all in one petition. Once we figure out all of the engineering and the exact way that these will be annexed, we'll have a better idea of how many ordinances it'll take to get it all done.
Does anybody have any questions for Jason or Steve? I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I offer a resolution accepting a petition for annexation of the Bath property and scheduling first reading of an annexation ordinance and a zoning ordinance for March 20.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. I'll be back.
Next is a presentation on a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Morgan County RE3 School District and our school resource officer, Chief Schultz.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. We are requesting a continuation of the intergovernmental agreement with the school district for a school resource officer. Been a very successful program, well-received by the community and the school district as well. This is routine review of the IGA, and we really have nothing new to report. It's an ongoing project that's been running very smooth. In light of all national events, we think it's a good idea to continue it.
I would concur with that.
Yep.
So there's really no changes to the previous agreements that we've had. They're all the same. I would entertain a resolution unless anybody has questions.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Morgan County RE School District for a school resource officer.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tell Officer Malone we appreciate his duties at the high school.
I certainly will.
Next is a presentation on a change order for engineering design for the Center Point Plaza subdivision. Mr. Glamire?
Okay, thank you. Good evening. What you have in your packet here is a request to change order the contract with Bohannon Houston. Council will recall that back in June of 2017, we contracted with Bohannon to prepare all of the design documents and drawings for the Center Point Plaza subdivision development. At that time, we had not received the CDOT access permit that was required in order to connect to Platte Avenue, US 34. So we've received that, and it did come with some additional requirements, some additional turn lanes, and other things that CDOT is requiring to meet, the traffic flow patterns that are coming in and out of that subdivision. So Bohannon did not anticipate that in their initial proposal to us, so they did submit this change order request that I've included in your packet tonight. So the original contract was for $73,695. The amount of this change order to cover those additional amounts is $14,542.85. So we're asking for a change order in that amount tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
The pictures or the drawings that you have in there, seems like a lot of lanes. Is there room for that? Is that going to come out of the Center Point Plaza property? And there's a ditch there. Is that going to be an issue at all?
Yep, and that's primarily the reason for the change order, and that's a great question. We're actually going to address that again here in a minute, but I want to speak to that. We are going to require additional right-of-way to handle this additional lane, and a lot of the design fee is because of the ditch. We're having to pipe more of the ditch than we anticipated originally, and so that's what you're finding a lot of this design fee to cover, is to cover that additional ditch work and additional lanes that are required. So you hit on it exactly. Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution for... On a change order for engineering design contract for Center Point... Center Point Plaza subdivision.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much.
Steve?
Center Point.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a final plat for Center Point Plaza Major subdivision. This is a public hearing. Please keep comments. Please keep public comment to the issues that are before the council, and each speaker is asked to limit their comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allotted. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony of questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a time limit on the duration of testimony by determining it necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this hearing properly notified... noticed?
Yes, Your Honor. Our legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on February 15.
Next is a presentation of the application. Mr. Glamire?
Okay, thank you. You've seen this subdivision before in many forms, sketch plan, preliminary plat. We're at final plat stage. The final plat stage actually sets the document that allows us to... We record this document, and it actually creates the lots that we can go out and market and sell for, you know, investors that may be interested in developing in the subdivision. So this is the, really, the last final step in that process. So this is the, really the last final step in that process. We have been working hard through the final plat process, everything is in order. The one change that is different from what you have seen at preliminary plat is the addition of right-of-way adjacent to US 34, Platt Avenue, because of the additional requirements that CDOT has requested in the access permit. So we did get an additional five feet of right-of-way, and that five feet is only for that portion that's from the western boundary to Saunders Road. So it really encumbered two additional lots, but we have adjusted those lots, we actually have a interested party in one of those lots. So we've confirmed that the lot size that got adjusted still meets their requirements and their desires, so I think we've made this fit rather nicely for everybody and all parties involved. So, we've received no public comments on this plat since we've advertised it, and so it's before you tonight for approval. We did take this to the planning commission, and they recommended approval. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
What are you most excited about?
I can't hardly wait to build the road, it's going to be very exciting, and then we've got people ready to build right now, so when we get this thing recorded, I do think you will see development start rapidly on this. We'll be building the road as somebody is building a building.
Wonderful.
Very exciting.
Anybody have any questions? Next we'll hear comments from the applicant.
That'll be me. Stephen, I flipped a coin.
Wonder which one was going to step up on that one.
You want me to go around? Are you okay? On behalf of the city of Fort Morgan, who is the applicant here, I would request that the city council approve this. This is part of a long-range plan for economic development and development opportunities for businesses within the city of Fort Morgan, and is really a big step towards making land available for businesses that want to expand or relocate to the city of Fort Morgan. We've already got our first lot read it. Do we have it under contract at this point, Jason?
The draft contract is out there, we were wanting to make sure that we had an accurate legal description before that.
So, we'll be moving to close on this property, the first parcel, probably in the next few months. So, and I know the person is very excited about it, to expand their business in Fort Morgan, and they've been great to work with, and we anticipate that there'll be additional opportunities for other businesses that are interested in moving into that area. So, we recommend the approval.
Next, we'll hear public comments. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue? There is no one in the public who wishes to speak on this, I would ask the clerk if there were any oral or written comments submitted prior to this hearing.
Not to my office, your honor.
We'll now proceed to council discussion. Are there any questions from council or discussion on this matter?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Glenn Meyer and all city staff who have worked on this to expedite this process, and it is very exciting and happy to see it happening. Thank you.
Do we have any past history with this applicant as far as being troublesome?
Once in a great while. But we have you under control.
I want to switch applicants then, because we don't have that problem with you.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Your honor, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Questions?
Have a motion by Allison Howe, a second by Lisa Northrup. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Council action, Mr. Myers.
All right, so the purpose of having council involved in these processes is to ensure that the subdivision meets the needs of the city and it'll be in harmony with what's around there, et cetera. Generally, when the city owns the property, that's kind of at the first and foremost of why we're doing this. But nevertheless, there are criteria in the code provided by the memo as well that we look at when evaluating this. If you feel that it fits those, then you would move to finalize the final plat or accept the final plat. If you feel there's anything additional that needs to be adjusted, you could continue this and work with staff, but.
I would entertain a resolu- resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution for acceptance of an application for a final plat for the Center Point Plaza subdivision.
Second.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Dan Marler. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Built some roads, Steve. Next on the agenda is discussion regarding closure of the parks at night. Mr. Wells.
I'll come back here for this one.
So, this is an issue that we've been looking at for quite some time, and we're looking
to get feedback from city council before we bring an ordinance forward. Just want to highlight some of the issues that we're trying to address with the policies we're going to discuss tonight. In some of our parks, primarily in Riverside Park, but also in other parks, we have a situation where we have increased criminal activity in the area of drug dealing, graffiti, littering, vandalism, and have even had some assaults in the parks related to activities that go on down there, usually at night. Some of the vandalism includes breaking things, driving over the lawn with pickup trucks, and I would note that, when I talked about this a little bit in Rotary today, that not one, but two Rotary Christmas trees have been desecrated in Riverside Park as a result of kids messing around out there. And I know I make light of something that's serious, but it is a serious issue. We spend anywhere from two to three hours a day cleaning up trash that people throw out of their cars into the parking lot. That's taxpayer money that's wasted to clean up after somebody because they won't walk over and put it into a trash can. Problems with enforcement that we have is limited light down in the park, in Riverside Park and in some of the other parks. We've had vandalism in the bathrooms at other parks, JC Park, Fulton Heights Park, and we're doing different things to try and alleviate those problems that don't include closing the parks. For example, we've put in, we're putting in new bathrooms or a new bathroom option for Fulton Heights and JC Park. But that being said, we still have to deal with these other issues that are going on. We have had a lot of discussion with the police department, we've had a lot of discussion with the parks department and, and community services to determine what is the best way to manage this problem. We've talked, and the police department had some really good comments, especially in our last manager's meeting concerning this. So one of the things that we're recommending and would like to discuss with you tonight with regard to addressing this problem is closing the parks. One of the first issues that came up when we started discussing this was, well, what about people that want to camp down there? And as we've looked into that, we know that the camping down there makes Fort Morgan unique. A lot of people like to pull off the highway and camp there, but we also are not the only camp spot here in Fort Morgan. There's Silver Spur, there's Good Sam, I know Brush has a camping area for people, so we're not completely limiting the opportunity for people to camp. Jason looked into some of the aspects of camping and some of the regulations on camping, and we don't meet the minimum requirements to provide camping actually in Riverside Park. You have to have running water and sewer available to all campers, and I think that's a 24/7 responsibility, or at least during open hours. Did you want to?
Yeah, whenever, whenever it's being utilized as a campground, it has to have those amenities available. There's also some more obscure amenities about, you know, marking camp spots and having setbacks so that people aren't getting run over in their sleep, and these are all from the state health department.
And so, our camping area doesn't meet the state regulations for camping area. So the first issue that we were trying to tackle is, what do we do? Do we do exemptions for camping? Do we allow people, some people to camp in there and not others? We have some pretty big things that go on down in the park, like the disc golf tournament, a lot of people like to go and camp during that, and unfortunately, we don't meet the requirements to provide camping for those things. And we're building a lot of really nice new hotels that are a lot nicer to stay in than a campground. So we're hoping that we can help promote some of our local business with this policy as well. So we're looking at closing the city parks, all parks, from five, 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM, and, I think I wrote that wrong in my memo, anyways, that's the time. Close at 11:00 PM, open at 5:00 AM. There may be some discussion we have to have with regard to some of the bigger events, for example, Bob Stock, that you may not have people clearing out until around 11 o'clock, and so there may be, in City Park, but they also provide security as well. So, that would be a situation where we'd probably be less concerned about people being in the park after 11 while they're trying to go home, because we do have security and police there. So, I'd like to open it up for discussion, questions and comments from the council, and kind of get your thoughts and feedback. Is this a good idea? Is this a bad idea? Is there another idea? Is there some way that we can approach this differently other than what we've recommended?
Personally, I think it's a good idea. I was addressed with this 25 years ago. We had issues back then, and we were the only city at that point that we did not close our parks. Most of them closed them at dusk, and we had the same thing going on, and it really hasn't gotten any better. And, so, I'm all in favor of it.
I think it's very important, one of the biggest issues I think we can compare has nothing to do with Riverside Park, has everything to do with City Park. You know, the fact that our library facilities, we wouldn't, we would not be in the situation we are with our basement and our library facility had there not been, you know, issues that caused, you know, the flooding that happened, and, you know, so that's a huge impact on the taxpayers, because we, you know, I'm sure that didn't happen during the light of day, you know, and so I think it just, it just provides a level of safety, you know, and it provides a level of, you know, I guess I look at it and, you know, my mother always raised us and said, nothing good happens after, you know, well, she said midnight, but, nothing good happens after 11 o'clock.
In the parks.
Especially in parks. So I, like Doug said, I am in favor of doing this. I think it, you know, it serves the proper purpose for what we're trying to accomplish, and cleans up our city, and I'm sure we have better uses for our Parks Department employees than cleaning up trash from the previous night's activities.
Yeah, I'm wondering about the enforceability of something like this. Once upon a time, I found myself, of no fault of my own, in locations late at night where I was not welcome. The fact that I was not welcome did not deter us from being there. Are we setting ourselves up for a situation where putting, making an ordinance that's not enforceable? Say you have some kids at a park and they're just hanging out, and the police come and say, hey, you need to go somewhere else. Are we going to just park there all night to make sure they don't come back as soon as the officer leaves? Are we going to be spending time and money and resources in another way as opposed to cleaning up the park? Are we just going to be having our officers camping out, making sure those darn kids get out of there?
Well, we won't let them camp, because that'll be against the rules, but, no, your point, it's a very important point that you make, and I think what this does for the police is it gives them a reason to contact people after hours. Right now, they can't go up to somebody and say, hey, why are you here? You have broken the law, I have probable cause to issue a summons, and that opens up a whole different opportunity from the Fourth Amendment in making sure that they, you know, they can do different things when they have already committed a crime than they can do if they're not allowed to even contact them. Right now, if you were to go down there at 2:00 in the morning and somebody's down there in a car, I mean, I guess you could always stop and knock on the window and see what they're doing, but you really wouldn't have any reason to contact them unless you could articulate that you thought somebody was hurt, sick, or otherwise. And so it gives the officers a reason to contact, that's the first benefit. The second thing is, I don't think they're going to have to camp out down there. I think a few enforcements and kids are going to know, that's not where we want to be, that's not where we need to be, because it's, it's not as, well, the police come down and give us tickets, and we don't want to be where we're going to get tickets. They'll likely move somewhere else, and that was another issue that came up, where will they go? There's a lot of discussion that they might go downtown, and again, discussions with the police. It was determined that it's easier actually to enforce and police some of the activities that are going on in Riverside Park downtown, because you have better lighting, you have vantage points of sitting on the roof of a building and watching them drink beer or throw trash on the ground, or some of these other things, or vandalizing things, and so there's a much easier way to enforce and see what's actually going on. So we've had those discussions as well, but I don't think that the police are going to have to camp out at the parks. But I can tell you, we do close the backside of Riverside Park already, the fishing ponds, they closed, I think, at nine.
Nine.
Nine o'clock, and the police know, and I don't know how they know, but I've been on a few ride-alongs, they just know what time to be back there when people are being criminal, and it's usually right after nine o'clock, and they have a reason to stop them, and had some pretty interesting ride-alongs with incidents that happened in that part of the park. But I don't think that we're going to be requiring the police to be parked at the parks, I think it gives them another tool. Also, you know, it also gives our citizens something to call about, and say, hey, kids in the park, it's after hours, and then they can get a call for service to go over there and check it out. I agree very much with what Lisa said, if we had nobody in the parks at night, whoever caused the damage to the children's section of the library, you know, somebody could have seen him and said, hey, call 911 and send the police over there to stop them. Don't know if that would have worked or not, but it would have, it's one more thing that we have to work with. And I don't think, to your point, that if you chase them off, will they come back? They likely will. And I can't necessarily speak for the police, and I let the chief kind of speak to this point, but once you make contact with them, you kind of know who they are, and you can say, all right, listen, you're here after hours, I want your license, I want to know who you are. They take notes on that, and then when they come back, they know if something's broken or something's wrong, now they have suspects to go and talk to. So it, I think it provides a better level of policing, and chief, I don't know if you had any comments on that.
I think you're absolutely right. We've got to. Try this one.
As I was saying, I think you're absolutely right. It gives the police another tool. Right now, we can't contact people down there, there really is no violation. When we do have the ability to contact them pursuant to a violation, it opens up several enforcement avenues. One of them is a warning, another one would be trespass violation. Without an ordinance, we really have no, no legal ability to contact people there. The criminal activity at the park, especially Riverside Park, should be curtailed with an ordinance that says you can't be here after 11:00 PM. Right now, on occasion, we are having some serious crimes there, and we can't be there all the time. I take a little bit of a different perspective, I think the majority of the kids that we contact will not come back, because we'll give them a stern warning. But there will be some, absolutely, but I've talked to several kids who go down there, and I think with proper signage and warnings from the police, I think they'll stay away. It will reduce crime.
11 o'clock's pretty close to the regular curfew anyway.
Weekdays, curfew's 11, weekends, it's 1:00 PM, and, you know, like I said, I floated this with, I told the Rotary Club we were doing this today, and some of their perspectives were, well, if parents are upset because their kids can't hang out at the park at 11 o'clock, why don't they have their kids at home? So, you know, I think there was a push for parental responsibility of making sure you know where your kids are at at 11 o'clock at night.
Well, and we expend a pretty good amount of employee workforce going down on the weekends and picking up trash, debris, the vandalism that occur down in the park over the Friday, Saturday, during the summer, weekdays, there's a lot of time spent. There's a lot of time spent doing duties that they shouldn't have to.
Yep. And so, we think it's gonna make things more efficient for the Parks Department. They're gonna be able to do other things other than pick up trash, like go around the trails and make sure things are safe and, you know, maybe do some other maintenance opportunities during the day instead of spending three hours picking up trash and putting it in a bucket.
I think it's important to note, I mean, we kind of dwelled on this being youth, but I guarantee this isn't all youth that are doing this. I mean, you know, there's plenty of adults that exhibit bad behavior. And so, I think that'll be a whole different ballgame and I think, you know, you won't be, you know, speaking to parents for stern warnings, but I think you're gonna have adults that are gonna be more curtailed and it'll absolutely.
I guess youth to me could be 35.
Are you saying how old they act?
Clint, don't be on the parks.
Is it based on behavior or age?
I was thinking actual, you know, calendar age, but I guess you have a point.
Well, and I know that Councilmember Shasso has, you know, firsthand experience in dealing with some of the problems down there. You know, one of the things that we had and we've had complaints from parents concerned about safety of their kids in the playground and I know at one point we had some sex offenders that had taken up residence in the camping area down there. And that was another concern for the safety of the kids. And so, another good reason to be looking at this.
It's just a huge tool, you know. At 11 o'clock, you know, you got kids down there that look like they're, they should be 16, they look 20, there's really no reason to contact them. At least that is an option. You're right. It's another tool to use. Warrants, whatever.
That is correct. We did have two sex offenders living there, have since moved. And one, well, we did have two at one time, yeah.
And so, you know, now after 25 years, Doug, of trying to get this done, you're on council now for a few weeks and it might happen.
Yeah. May, may, may.
My question is just like this transition period, if this is something that council decides to move forward with and support, that first year is gonna be really interesting if people are used to camping out, if they come for the disc golf tournament, what Chief Schultz talked about signage, is that something we need to think about budgeting for?
Well, we've got, we can make the signs. We've got some money in the budget to make the signs if we need to do that. And I want to thank Ty Hamer and Daniela Cabrera who've really been putting a lot of work and effort into this. And some of the things that we can do, and I'm glad you bring that up, is we'll notify those special events holders that it's no longer allowed and they need to come up with some other opportunities. The other thing is if that's going to be a problem, we can look at when we pass this to be, after that, give them one more year to be able to do that. That's something that we could take into consideration. But, the big one is the disc golf tournament. And so, but we will be giving notification to those people that generally do that and putting up signs. The other thing we'll probably do is remove the electric outlets for the campers off of the, I think we'll keep the lights up obviously, but we'll take the electric outlets out for the RVs.
Well, don't forget the state spent a lot of money for that rest stop just 10 miles down the road, so.
That's true.
Send them down there, nice bathroom.
Can they camp at that rest stop?
No, spend the night, they'll sleep.
But, I mean, can they, can they actually camp in like a tent? Or has it gotta be pull up?
I don't, I don't think they can camp.
And like you said, there's, I mean, there's nice facilities nine miles the other direction, you know, that allow that kind of camping and brush and, you know, so for the disc golfers, it's not like we're asking you to drive to Brighton.
And Wayward Wind has, I think, Good Sam out there now. You could pull your camper out there and spend the night.
Can there, can there be any exceptions for camping in terms of if there is an event, having portal bodies and some other facilities brought out? I witnessed the disc golf camping thing. It's a community of people. They, you know, it was kind of a festive event. Kind of hate to see that go. I don't know what the state regulations are, but is there an option for special use permit for big events where camping may be allowed, providing that facilities are provided?
That is a possibility and that's something that we could look at here. One of our concerns with the exceptions is that when you start building in exceptions, does it apply to all people? Can anybody come in and get an exception? And at what point does that put us in a position where someone might say we're discriminating against a specific group if we're making exceptions for specific groups? But, if that's something that the council wants us to consider and put into the ordinance, we can definitely do that, that there would be exceptions granted under certain specific circumstances such as a special event.
And we could look at if there is a special event, how do we try to harmonize what currently exists with what those state requirements would be if that's something we can do? Whether it's, you know, requiring that the special event provide water that's accessible and we, you know, the sewer, I think the bathroom only runs during the summer, so we couldn't feasibly allow people to be camping with no way to relieve themselves during the winter time. You know, whether it comes down to paying for marking off spots and all of those regulations, it gets far more complicated, but perhaps not impossible.
So, what I'm hearing, to make sure I understand, if I understand council correctly, you want to move forward with this kind of a policy and what we'll do is we'll draft, and Jason's already drafted a pretty lengthy ordinance that we're trying to make as simple as possible. He's done a really good job in looking at regulations from a lot of different parks. And so.
It's easier to delete than it is to come up with stuff on the fly.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Jason. And so, we'll bring back an ordinance that outlines the things that we've talked about tonight. And I guess this will give the community time also to get in touch with you and let you know how they feel about it. And, you know, we'll have a first reading and a second reading and if this is something that's important to the community, one way or another, hopefully they will reach out and get in touch with their council members and let you know what they think is important for the community.
Thanks, Jeff.
There are no other questions. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public comment for any items not on the agenda. I know who you are, Mr. Darnell, but would you sign in, please?
He was just waiting to pop up like an A Z.
Yes, you do.
Councilmembers and staff. My name's Jack Darnell, live at 809 Cheyenne Street. And I'm here tonight to talk about a concern I have that's come to my attention. My concern is about the turnover in the police department. In the past year, there has been a 22% turnover rate. There are several experienced officers that are looking at leaving the department in the next few weeks. I don't know if you're aware of that or not. If these officers leave, we will reach a 40-plus percent turnover rate in the department. Since the charter changed 10 years ago, there was, has been three chiefs of police in 10 years. I guess the position's named different now. Under the previous charter, there were three chiefs in 60 years. And if you go back, it'd be four in 62. I had the opportunity to talk with many officers throughout the city. One thing that I noticed is the happiness has gone. I know the officers well. I stop and talk to them on the streets. They don't talk anymore. What's not spoken to me speaks louder than what is spoken. Something's going on. This turnover has led to only three officers on a shift. The PD is unable to set up a parameter in a crime scene with three officers shift. That leads to an officer safety issue and it leads to a public safety issue. And it also causes an issue at the scene there, the suspects getting away and evidence being destroyed and other things that the police have to take care of. The Fort Morgan Police Department has lost over 100 years of institutional knowledge in the past year and that will get higher in the next few weeks. Institutional knowledge is so important to an organization. Some agencies went to a program called the DROP Program, Deferred Retirement Option Program, especially back east, back in the late 90s because there was a large influx of officers that went on the police departments for 20 to 30 years and they lost them. They were losing that institutional knowledge. This is an expensive plan, but they went to it. It's a public safety issue. It takes five years from my experience, which I have quite a bit of, to train and develop an officer into a well-rounded officer that is efficient and has a knowledge and purpose of his or her job to be the greatest service to their community. Each police department's different. They have different cultures. Fort Morgan's, the culture has changed. I know police well. In closing, I can show you, since the charter changed 10 years ago, the effectiveness, the institutional knowledge and the happiness in the department has steadily gone down, decreased to a point where there is an officer safety issue and a public safety issue. Therefore, I submit to you, a charter change is needed to place the police back under the mayor council. The easiest way to do it is through a referendum through council. This is, you could do a special election this year. I've already done some checking. We would like to see council address this issue of putting the charter change on the ballot this November in a special election at the next council meeting. If not, then there would be a citizens initiative to put it on the ballot in November. And if we do that, there'll be a lot of them. So, anyway, I have contacted the county clerk's office and she said that she could do a coordinate election this November with the city of Fort Morgan. I also contacted the secretary of state's office to see if we would have to do anything through them. They said, "No, everything would be done through the city clerk." I also asked them if it would be proper for people doing an initiative to go to the city clerk for the process. And they said it would be, just like people go to the secretary of state's office for the process on elections and initiatives on ballots. I'd like to also submit to you that when I was working, I had a chance to work with the FBI and they tried to recruit me at one time. And I thought about it for about a week. I was happy at my job and I felt secure. I didn't go. I could've made more money going to work for the FBI, but I didn't. I stayed with the organization I was with. I served several years on the Salary Survey Committee for the state of Colorado and we looked at this. Pay is not the big issue. It's number three on the list. People being happy and people feeling secure at their job, and you all can identify with this. You've been in jobs before. You can take a little less pay for a job you're happy and feel secure with. So, there's an issue there. So, all I ask is that you take it under consideration and look at it at the next meeting. It'd be a lot easier and cleaner to do a referendum. If we do an initiative, it'll be a little different. So, does anybody have any questions on anything? That's basically all I wanted to say.
I appreciate your input and we will take it under advisement. I appreciate it, Jack.
Okay. Thank you. Hey, I really appreciate the annexation too.
Oh, yeah. Hey, I know that was one of your big issues. We're annexing and everything, Jack. But, I've got a quick question for you, Jack, if you might help. So, you're talking about your interactions with the officers themselves. Do you have any statistics or information that demonstrate that somehow crime is going up or that somehow the police department is not as effective in keeping the public safe?
I haven't checked into that, but what I'm concerned about was all these shootings that's been going on, especially in Colorado. Police shootings, we're pleased on the shooter shot, and also the school shootings that's going around. With officers leaving with experience, when we do get in that crisis situation, we're gonna have problems. That's what I'm concerned about. I didn't look at that, any information on that. What I'm concerned about, when something happens, it happens now. You gotta be ready for it. And if you're not, then you'll be paying the price. And the council is, the buck stops here with the council. And people be coming to them saying, "What's going on?" Because if we do have a big crisis, it's not gonna go down as well. We have officers working together. The five-year thing is the big thing on experience, knowledge, and you need that five year. Once you get to five years, you want to try to keep these guys. You don't want them leaving.
Right.
It's important. You can hire and buy the dozen for a year or two and then I'll go and look for another job somewhere. They may use this for a stepping stone. But, you start getting them over five years, they start making a commitment to this organization. And you want to keep those people. They're valuable employees. Your biggest ambassadors for the city of Fort Morgan is your police department. If you get young people in there, they have to see what the real purpose is. It takes them years to find out what it is when they stop somebody on the road. Attitudes, attitudes, they develop over time. Why am I really here? It took me a while to figure that out, at least five years. But, the stats you're talking about is not what I'm talking about. I haven't looked at that. I'm concerned about something going down. And when you have officers working together for five years or more, they know how each other thinks. Sure, you can call the sheriff's department, you can call State Patrol, you can call the National Guard in. It's different. These guys work together. They know how each other thinks. They get in a hot situation, boom, 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 things start happening. And is it gonna happen tomorrow? I don't know. Is it gonna happen in a month? Eventually, something's gonna snap and you want the best department you can have. And right now, I don't know if you have that or not. Because you lost this institutional knowledge that's so valuable.
Well, and one of the things that might be important for you to understand, and we can sit down and talk about this, I can demonstrate and show you that, you know, we have been heavy in the police department with people with over 20 years of experience for some time and most people want to retire when they get to that level in their service. You know, and one of the issues that we've constantly had, and I think Doug can speak to this, is the time he served as a sergeant, is that it's hard to keep people here past five years when they first start. So, you know, one of these things that we're trying to balance here is not just an issue of, you know, we're losing institutional, we're going to lose institutional knowledge. An issue we've been trying to address for the last five years is how do we keep the officers here longer than five years? Because the reality is, we're not competing with Brush or Sterling or Otis or Ray. We're competing with Denver and Commerce City and Greeley and Fort Collins for the talent that is necessary for people to be police. And as you know, law enforcement people take a special mindset. There's a more rigorous hiring aspect to bringing them on. It takes a little bit longer. And, you know, I would have to say that we understand that five-year mark, but if you go back and look at some of the turnover for the last 10 years, a majority of our turnover has been the result of people leaving to go to other agencies in the front range. So, what happens when all of these guys, you know, 40% of our department has over 17 years of experience? What happens when they retire? And we don't have anybody that's been here for more than five years. I totally agree with what you're saying, but I don't think that that's necessarily a management issue as much as it is an issue with demographics and the number of people that want to be in police and how much they want to get paid and what we can afford to pay. So, I think it's definitely something council needs to consider. It's definitely something that I'll look at as a city manager and I'll get in touch with the police department and the administration over there and try and figure out what the morale issue seems to be that you've recognized.
Well, I tell you, there's other issues too. Look at the retirement that they have, the officers. It's a defined contribution plan, defined benefits plan, which you're under and the rest of the city is, is actually a better plan than what the police department has. That's a motivator too.
Not necessarily if you compare it along police departments. Our police department has the richest defined contribution plan in the state of Colorado. Union shops, for example, like Greeley, their max contribution is 10%. We do 12.8%. So, if you want to compare apples to apples in law enforcement, we actually have a richer plan comparatively to other organizations.
Through my experience, and I was on a PERA board, as you know, for eight years, but a defined benefits plan is much better than the fine contribution because you're guaranteed so much a month, the rest of your life. The contribution goes up and down with the market. I know several police officers that stayed 10 years longer, maybe more, because of the fine contribution plan that they have through Fort Morgan PD.
Right.
And I, and I know other officers, I know some places like Boulder went underneath the PERA a while back, but that's an incentive right there. The Drop Program, like I was telling you about, you don't want to lose your officers. You say they're going after 20, 25 years. Those are the guys you want to sit down and say, "What can we do to keep you?" You can't just give up and say, "We're gonna do it," because they will stay if they like their job. Remember, I was on a salary survey for the state of Colorado. Pay is not the number one issue. It's third. Happiness, job security is the way it goes. Anyway, that's been my experience.
And.
Also, the other big thing is a team. When I worked with my officers, we had a team, a feeling of belonging. You gotta treat them as a team. And there's a, you know, I don't know what Fort Morgan's doing on that, but it's a process again.
And I agree with that. And I don't necessarily want to refute the things you're saying because I know that they're right, but I want to make sure that the public. they're right, but I want to make sure that the public has the right information. And we have looked, and I've talked with para, I talked with Greg Smith before he passed away, and said, what can we do to get our police officers on para? And they won't touch it. They won't touch it because FPPA has that contract, and they don't want to compete with FPPA. We've worked FPPA, and in the last several years, they've been working to try and come up with a defined benefit plan that we can get into. The problem is, for our older officers, that's really hard, because they have to buy credits, and those credits are expensive if they want to roll that over. You know, when you were the mayor, and you started out as a mayor, I know law enforcement and public safety is really important for you, you know, the officers were getting six and six, 6%. And, you know, they did have a defined benefit plan, the old hire plan. The old hire plan's rich. Those guys are set, and they do well. And it's almost to the point where it's not sustainable and affordable. We spend the same amount for three employees, it's roughly $115,000 a year, and for 24 employees who can manage their own fund, we're spending about $200,000 a year. So, you know, when you look at the sustainability of defined benefit plans, Social Security has an end date. They know that they're not going to have enough money coming in at a certain point.
That's another issue, too.
But it's a defined benefit plan.
The problem with Social Security is they borrow trillions of dollars to fight wars with it, then Congress doesn't pay it back, and then they lose that. There's a lot of other issues here that, we can debate this all day.
We could.
And I think we're done with our debating. I appreciate your bringing this to our attention, and it will get addressed. And if you've got any questions or comments for me, you know how to get a hold of me.
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks, Jack, I appreciate it very much. Okay, next on the agenda is bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan?
I think we've got reports by officials and staff, if there are any.
Officials and...
Thank you for the correction.
I know we have a few people that might have announcements. Brent, did you have something you want to share?
Yeah, I just wanted to hit real quickly, I could have covered it earlier, but we have, I think, contracts for our construction of the fiber system, are in front of Ron for signature, and we've actually had one meeting with our contractor and started talking completion dates. And just so you guys are aware, our contractor still feels that beginning on April 2nd, that they should be able to finish up construction of the system sometime in August. They're looking at approximately 88 to maybe plus day turnaround on the construction. Now, that doesn't mean the system's going to be up and running in August, but that means we're going to have our portion of the system installed and ready to be lit sometime after that point. And so ALO will be working in conjunction with that as we move along to get parts of it up and going as we get it installed. But I thought that was good news. We were hoping that they would still be able to meet those deadlines, so that's why we're kind of piecing the equipment stuff into several different bids so we can stay up with that schedule. So I was kind of excited to hear that. I think we definitely are staying in lines with the direction you guys gave us and the deadlines that we were talking with ALO, that we should be able to have this system all up and running by the end of the year without any trouble, so just wanted you guys to know that.
Just a quick update for council. Last week, I went to Lincoln, Nebraska. It was sunny Lincoln when I was there, not cloudy Lincoln, to attend a meeting for MPGA, which is National Public Gas Association, which is where we buy our wholesale gas. They're looking at a lot of different things related to the organization and how they're going to operate that organization down the road. I wasn't aware of some of the things that they were doing, because we're just a contract member, we're not a voting member. It may, and Brent and I talked about this, it may be in our interest to look into becoming a voting member down the road, just so we have a little more control about what's going on. But between Trinidad and the city of Fort Morgan, we make up more than 50% of the load of that organization, so we hold a little bit of weight. And one of the things that I was very clear about is that we cannot have a discontinuance of the services that we currently have for our customers and the customers that we're trying to bring in. And so just want to let you know, that meeting went fairly well, and they heard our voice, and they're well aware of it. I know that the chairman of the board is planning on coming to Fort Morgan. He lives in Central City, Nebraska, and he's planning on coming down here and meeting with Brent and I and kind of talking about the direction that they want to go and make sure that we're on board with it. So it was kind of a last-minute trip I had to make, but I think it was positive. So just wanted to report on that.
Anything else?
Bids, meetings, and announcements.
Under bids, we've got 2018 HBP paving and chip seal projects until 4:00 p.m. on March 8th, 2018 on-call HBP paving services until 4:00 p.m. on March 8th, waterline isolation project until 5:45 p.m. on March 8th, 2018 water and sewer underground infrastructure projects until 3:00 p.m. on March 8th, streets shop equipment storage building project until 3:00 p.m. on March 21st, Henderson to XL 115 kilovolt transmission line project until 4:00 p.m. on March 22nd, mid-size to full-size all-wheel, four-wheel-drive sport utility vehicle for the information technology department until 2:45 p.m. on March 23rd, and two high-capacity outdoor library book returns until 3:00 p.m. on March 23rd. Under meetings, the planning commission is scheduled to meet on March 12th at 4:30 p.m. at City Hall. Senior Center Advisory Board is scheduled to meet at 1:30 p.m. on March 13th. On March 14th at noon, the airport advisory board is scheduled to meet at the airport. March 19th at 4:30 p.m., the library advisory board is scheduled to meet at the museum community room. The next city council regular meeting will be at 6:00 p.m. on March 20th, and that will begin with a tour at 4:15, but that will be a tour of the water treatment plant, and the council meeting will be held out at the water treatment plant. So you can, if you want to drive out, straight out there yourself, or come here first and carpool, either way will work. Couple of quick announcements, the city cemetery will be starting its spring cleanup, and asks that decorations and other things around grave sites be removed by March 11. The Barlow Road railroad crossing is expected to be closed for the entire day on March 14th, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. BNSF Railway has informed us of this, and they say it should only take that day, but that could depend on conditions and the progress of the work. And the big Fort Morgan spring cleanup campaign is going to go March 24th to April 1st this year, and there's information on our website about what is and is not allowed to be put out for the spring cleanup. And we also have several vacancies on our golf course advisory board, those are for city residents, and you can contact my office for more information.
That's Morton's bid. Thanks, John. Next on the agenda is an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-4024E. And for the following additional information are provided, the following additional details are provided for identification purposes, wastewater capacity. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Your honor, I make a motion to move to executive session?
Second.
I have a motion by Allison Howe and a second by Dan Marler, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. We will adjourn to executive session.